Hi. Are you ready? Good evening and welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for December 12th, 2019. If you would stand please or make a pledge, we adjourn.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. And if you see that.
We're greeting.
Welcome, and I would like to begin with public comment. So if anybody would like to address the board this evening, please step to the microphone and do so.
Richard Walther, Webster Citizens Action League. On behalf of the Webster Citizens Action League, I would just like to wish the board and all the employees of the village a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You too.
Merry Christmas cards for everybody here.
Oh, thank you.
Checks for us.
Nice.
Bonus.
Christmas bonus, huh?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else you got to say?
And the board would certainly like to extend to everybody here this evening and to the village and anybody wanting a Merry Christmas as well because we will not be meeting before then. How about say Christmas? Can I say Christmas?
Christmas.
That's politically correct.
I'm not going to say X. I'm going to say X. Anyone else? Ah.
I'd like to wish you a Merry Christmas as well. We can wish you a Happy New Year in the next meeting. Actually coming up here tonight on behalf of Missy Rosenberg and myself for the Parks Committee. So we've been meeting pretty consistently the last three months and I have to tell you what a great choice it was to put her on that committee because she's been really good with coming up with ideas and you know, kind of mixes it all with some of the ideas that I come up with and we have a great relationship there. So I wanted to give you a sense of where we were in terms of our, some of what we're talking about, so.
Not word, I'm just trying to.
That's all right. I understand. The, so we, the first, the first thing I wanted to mention to you is we're working on an updated park survey. We are, we're there and actually Missy put it together and I, we looked at the questions together. I'd like to pass it out to you. We're, this is a pretty generic survey, but the last one that was done was about 10 years ago, so it's a little bit outdated and so this would be the one that we would go from here and I'd just like to pass it down to you. Any of your, if you have any comments, it'd be great if you could just email me and we will include them. We're going to try to roll this out after Christmas. As you can see, this is a hard copy version, but it's actually a computer form, it's a Google Doc, actually a Google form that we could use and then people can actually take it online. We're hoping maybe we could get links from the village's website to the Google form so people would be able to be directed to the, to the survey. So obviously the font here is small, the font online is significantly larger and easier to read, but I want to make sure you had a copy of the complete thing. So that would be our first real, our first real big project for next year, just to get a sense of what people's feelings are about our parks and how often they use them and then to get a little demographic information on, on who's using them. The second thing we would like to, we're talking about is the village's website and we just need to sit down with Heather and I'm hoping to come in sometime soon and do that, about a, about getting some updated photos of the parks on there and perhaps getting a direct tab that would allow people to actually come to the website and tab directly into the park area because right now it's kind of hidden under a little bit more of the information, but even so, we want to, we'd like to update the photos because they're a little bit, they're not, they're not, there's not a photo for every park and then some of the parks don't have the most updated photos, so we're looking to do both of those. Also, we have been talking about making recommendations on park upgrades and we know that there's some money in the Parks and Recreation Fund, not that we won't necessarily use it, but we just wanted to make some recommendations to you as to what we might think about doing for some upgrades and that would also result in moving forward with the marriage plan about updating the comprehensive plan because that would be part of the comprehensive plan mix in terms of the parks section out there. And finally, next year, we are, we're looking at probably around April, trying to do like a scavenger hunt in our parks. So the idea being that kind of like a get to know your village park kind of deal. So we would have a Saturday, it looks like we'd set aside, and we'd have people be able to come out and have like a little scavenger hunt through the parks so they get more knowledge about where the parks are, what their amenities are and all that kind of thing. So, so we've been really going gung ho on a lot of these things and additionally, some projects we have on the back burner are some of the, like we talked about the tree marker program and Jake and I have to get together with that a little bit more than we have and sort of pin that down. But as I said when I began, it has been great to have her because she's added so much energy to the conversation and in terms of our plans for the future and I just wanted to let you know that we're not just flying the doormat, we actually are working on things and we're hoping to roll out some of these things next year to give you guys and the village a little bit more visibility in the, because we have a lot of parks. I don't know if you guys are aware, just the square, you know, the number of parks we have and the area that they encompass is one of the, I think it may be the highest of any village in Monroe County unless you take out the fact that some places like Black Creek Park or county parks in the village of Churchville. So we have a lot of our own parklands, so it's been a really good legacy for the village and like to see us keep moving forward and let people know about it. Heather.
I just wanted to let you know that I did forward, someone wanted to speak at one of your press and rec meetings, so I forwarded you an email with them.
Okay. Absolutely. Please, please, we'd love to have, because that's the other thing too, we'd love to have more members. Obviously, two of us is really not enough. It's better than a single person, but it's better, but we'd love to have more people on the committee, so if they were interested, that'd be great. If anybody out there wants to help with that effort, it would be great too, because it is great to have discussion with village residents, so yeah, anytime, let me know. Don't, it's okay.
When are, I have the meetings down as a half hour before our meeting here.
Oh, no, like about a year ago, we altered it to the third, or I'm sorry, the fourth Wednesday of the month, but I will give you the schedule. How's that? So you won't have to wonder. Okay, all right. Do you have any questions or anything that I could answer for you about what we're doing or any plans or?
No, it sounds great.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock. Little, little meeting.
Do you have one this week, this month?
We're actually not having one this month because we just traditionally never had one in December, so it interferes with Christmas or New Year's usually, so, but we're doing it in January.
January.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to address the board this evening? If not, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, excuse me, and we will move to the scheduled agenda and see how far we get through it prior to starting the public hearing.
Trustee Valcain?
First of all, we have on the agenda, resolution to approve minutes from November 14th, 2019.
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byatt?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Third item on the agenda is resolution to authorize Jake Swingley, John Cunnival I've got a, hopefully I've got a chance of what goes over. and Will to attend La Bola and a cost not to exceed $100 per person. Any comments? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Jake, when is that?
I'll make that motion. That's in March this year.
I'll say.
Trustee Valcain?
Let's say the eighth through the 11th or the ninth through, ninth through the 11th.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
I mean, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Aye.
Mayor Byatt?
Where is it?
Approved.
How many?
Motion passed.
Is it already in the conference center?
Agenda item two, resolution to approve claims and warrants. Being proactive and, to watch well ahead of minutes. This is for the current cycle as well as the last cycle. I know that Jude and Carol had the opportunity to look at it over today or this week and
Yes, yeah, it's limited to 350 people to register for the, and it's, it's one of them that takes care of all the requirements. You have to have 24 hours of in-service training every year.
anybody else would like to look it over tomorrow?
It's a pretty popular one because it does it all in one, one setting, you know, on
Yeah, I didn't find it.
Okay.
this three day period, but so it fills up pretty fast and there's people, they'll come
Anyone else have a comment?
from Westchester County and all over the state really, so it's nice that it's local.
Good. Not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the authorization for Jake, John and Will to attend La Bola? Would you approve the claims and warrants?
I'll say.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye. I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lancy?
I'll second it.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byatt?
Aye.
Next we have the vendor financials.
Have a chance to look those over.
We had quite intensive discussions.
We have. Very intensive discussion.
Good to go.
We're good.
Then we need to have some motion to approve those. All right, agenda item five, this is an update on the Ready Grant. Jake, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, yeah, the Ready Grants, the Resiliency and Economic Development Initiative that they pass, I think in, partially in response to some of the Lake Ontario shoreline issues. In our area, our, you know, Webster, kind of Webster village, Webster, we're lucky enough with, working with Matt Chatfield there, I think, to get five different grants for primarily the Lake Road, Sandbar area. One of the grants is a joint venture between us and the town where we're going to be able to decommission properly, decommission the wells that are down in the Sandbar area to protect the aquifer down there. The other part of it's going to be the town making some residency things and shoring up of their pump station, their sewer wastewater pump station that's now there in the Sandbar area. So we've, we've had some meetings, I know Matt's gone to more meetings than me and went to Albany, they had a summit where they were discussing the thing, but one of the first steps, one of the benchmarks is to let them know what we were in beginning of December. Now the next major benchmark, if you will, is that 10%, it's a 10% engineering, it's not a financial thing, it's a 10% completion on engineering plans and that's Valentine's Day, that's the next step. One of the things we started looking at, ours really, our portion of it, I think it's going to take very little engineering because we're taking stuff away and we're closing down, there's already standards and specs on how to properly decommission a well and the recommendations through the DEC and Department of Health and those things, so there's not a lot of engineering from a, hey, we have to design something standpoint, it's more, let's look at what we're, you know, how we're going to do it, how it's proposed and do it as an engineering report and there's not really much approval. Talking to the Health Department before when we first started looking at this in 2013, there's not an approval process, but they want time to recommend, to comment on it and make recommendations or review the, our plan for it. But one of the big things, we did get budget numbers for it, it's going to exceed the threshold for competitively bid projects, that's our expectation, that it's not really close to that $35,000 figure unfortunately, so it's going to exceed that, I bet it's, you know, it could be more than that, so this has to be bid and coming up with a bid packet is something that we reached out to an engineering firm to come up with that, that bid packet is. And since I sent them an email this afternoon, Matt forwarded me the engineering template, the engineering report template, so I'm going to see, and I think a lot of our portion of it might be NA, you know, not applicable, but I'm going to, to see if they do that portion of it, because the engineering report has to have a stamp on it, it has to be completed by an engineer. I want to see how that's going to affect the, their proposal and then come back probably in January, looking to see if we can have those, that proposal approved. It's going to be, ultimately end up in about $5,000 range. This grant is a 95%, we have a 5% match on it. Our portion of it, the total project I believe is 561,000 between the two, the pump station and ours, it depends on how that got allocated and in there.
How much was it, I'm sorry?
Five, I think it was, I want to say 561,000 for both, combined for both projects, I want to see what the town's portion was for the pump station and what our portion was because we had, you know, the initial plans and the budget numbers that we were putting together, they had seven of the eight wells down, so we had to, and it was a last minute thing, we finally got it, it took me quite a while to get there, there's not a lot of well drillers, certified well drillers, and we got it, it was a very, let's, let's assume that, you know, one seventh higher, you know, mobilization's going to be the same, we're not going to have those, but the one seventh higher and also there was some discussion on that of us providing gravel to, you know, that goes down in the well or the clay and some of the materials, so we were estimating what those things were to get an idea for the grant, so depending on where those things fell, we could have an idea. We've met with the town, we've met with Jeff Benway a couple weeks ago, and he's going to do the engineering portion for the town stuff, so it should be, it'll be something that's coming up at that, in a future meeting, we're going to have to do something with, but it's a, you know, one thing is that it's a really good deal trying to get, we want to get these things closed up properly, that are most vulnerable home ones, especially with the lake levels, protect the aquifer, that's a resource we can't get back if, if it gets goofed up, so it's, I think it's an important thing to do and it's really important to do when someone wants to give us 95% of the funding for it. I think it's a, it's a great time to do it.
So what kind of a time frame?
They're pushing on these things, it's going to be.
Because you said engineering by the Valentine's Day.
Yeah, engineering, and we might, our portion of it, and that's another thing, once we get the engineering report and I want to try to get those comments, we want to try to get the engineering report and the plans together pretty quick so we get the comments from the Department of Health and it's, it's a little tough. The Department of Health does public water supplies, it's no longer a water supply, but it's a well, but, but it's still aquifer that they want to protect, so it's a little gray area. The DEC does water withdrawal permits, but there's no expiration on a permit, so they permitted us to withdraw water, but it doesn't really go away, so it's a little kind of in limbo thing, but we want to make sure to get them down and get them done right and allow all those agencies to come in and plus get in the well drillers, the certified well drillers, get in there, spend them, because we've got a short window here, I mean, reality, you probably do wells most of the year, but it's a lot of the year in the summertime or the fall than it is in the middle of the winter. So we want to make sure to get in their, their window too and so once, it should be soon that we'll have a little clearer picture and a plan moving forward as far as timeline and what we want to do, but I think we want to get all our cups in a row sooner rather than later.
Yeah, how will this affect my?
Yeah, are they going to buy it, buy back that property?
That's, that's certainly something that, you know, that can be discussed and I think when the property was purchased for those well houses, it came out of those lots, I don't know exactly what those agreements were at the time or if they had a right of first refusal at the end of it, they may have, I don't think they owned it at the time, but I don't know if, if, some of them I think they did, some of them they didn't, but I don't know if they would transfer with the property or how that would work, so we certainly have an ingress egress easement to get, because we really own just the footprint of the building, so.
Jake, if they, once those wells are finally capped, permanently capped, can you pave over them and all this?
Yeah, once they're decommissioned and capping is, capping sounds like just putting a plug on the top of it or securing a cap, but really decommissioning them is pulling the pumps, pulling the drive shafts, you know, either pulling the casings or perforating the casings, filling them with the screen intervals, putting gravel and those so that you're not disrupting the flow of the water within the aquifer itself, although it's a, it's a 12 inch, 18 inch section, you know, where it is. I think it would flow around it, but you know, they, they figure out they want to, you know, fill those screen intervals with, with clay or with, excuse me, with rock and then put like bentonite clay in the rest of it and then you'd excavate down if it was inside a building, I think you'd go down six inches to cut it and if it's outside of a building, I think they want you to go down four or six feet, I forget, but cut, cut it down, but you're filling it up the whole way.
So it's not a cap.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's decommissioned. It's probably a more proper term than capped, you know, it's, it's out of service, it's done, you can't use it anymore.
So they remove the building and then some minor hit was.
But in this, our plan does not include the demolition of any of the buildings.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's, you know, if they want, you know, it's certainly for discussion with them, if they want to use abilities for storage or lemonade stands, it'd be.
So once it's, yeah. He could remove the building.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, and that's something that's all going to be worked out and agreed to, you know.
And I think that's what he said he was going to do if need to.
Yeah, in that meeting.
He would dare it, yeah.
Thank you, Jake. An update. All right, I think that we can move now to public hearing on Local Law Number Three, and that is to establish the size of allowed accessory buildings and to streamline the process for appeals to the zoning board of appeals. I believe that part of this is that notwithstanding before going in all residential districts of 120 square foot, accessory structure shall be allowed regardless of lot size, one of the main things. And exterior detached garage shall be finished with similar siding roofing as to the siding and roofing of the principal building. So if anybody would like to address the board, the public hearing is now open and the board will entertain anyone who would like to speak to. Public Local Law Number Three.
Pete Ralder, 59, Dunning Avenue. So I just wanted to say the second part of what you're looking at tonight, the streamlining to the zoning board of appeals, is an excellent idea and I hope that the board will implement it because it is a, it is a constant source of confusion for residents, I think, for the village. It is unusual in terms of the, of the sequence of events that occurs for other projects and other municipalities, so I would like to encourage you to definitely pass that one. I think you'll resolve in a better process for our, for applicants, so I think they'll be very appreciative of it, so please.
Thank you.
I would also mention in here that in any district, no detached garage or accessory building shall be placed near to a side or property line than 10 feet, so.
None of that is being changed, that's all the existing law. The only thing that's being added is, is in all residential zones, no garage shall be more than 600 square feet area and on all accessory buildings, this is a change, shall have a maximum size of 192 square feet or 1% of gross land area, whichever is less. Notwithstanding that we're going in all residential districts, a 120 square foot accessory structure shall be allowed regardless of lot size. So essentially what you're doing is any shed between 120 square feet and 192 square feet, depending on the size of the lot, is, is, doesn't need a variance, those, that's, whereas now you're stuck with 10 by 10, anything over 100 square feet requires a variance.
Most of them can add up with 120 or more.
Right.
What was the text changed to the zoning part?
It's just deleting the sentence in 17577A that requires the mandatory referral to the claim board, just deleting that entirely, otherwise it's staying the same.
Change the verb. Well, it was just, I should say year. It's not being changed, it's actually, it's just.
It's just a verbage on the fifth line there. It says more rear property line than 10 feet.
Oh.
You see what I'm saying?
Rear side or rear property line.
Ten feet.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Shall be placed nearer to a side or rear property line than 10 feet. I don't understand what your, what's your problem.
It doesn't sound like, well, that's the existing, or take the, or take the line.
Maybe nearer?
Yeah, yeah, nearer is what it says, that's the, that's the existing one.
I think it said a minute, they say nearer.
Yeah, it should, it should say nearer. In any district, no detached garage or accessory building shall be placed nearer to a side or rear property line than 10 feet.
Yep.
That sounds about the.
Add E I to the near.
That's existing.
That's existing.
So that, that, that was going to be changed anyway.
Yes. Near?
Yes. I don't know why it originally said near, probably closer is a better word than near.
Yeah, closer would make more sense.
Closer.
Near is existing.
I agree.
All right. But it's been nearer for at least since 1987, so.
Yes.
Well.
Closer's good, okay.
In 2019, we could change it to nearer.
I'm looking, no, it already is near, you're not changing anything.
You're not.
It's noting near.
If that's typed wrong here, it's.
Yeah, it was, it was simply an error by my secretary and then when you spell check, you know, near is a word, so it doesn't show it.
Yeah, it doesn't.
You call it.
Near is a word.
That's the way it is.
That's just what happened. Nobody's perfect.
Wow. I think your Christmas present just isn't going to be what it was now.
She never gives anything.
Oh, jeez. Cut the tape.
Wow.
I'm there too.
You're chasing yourself.
These aren't a point, oh, please, not far away.
Okay, are we making a motion here? What are you doing?
You can't.
You can't.
No motion? Okay.
Well, typically, you never adapt anything the night of a bullet year. Shall be placed nearer to a side or rear property line than 10 feet. I don't understand what your, what's your problem with it?
It doesn't sound like, well, that's the existing, or take the line, property or line.
Maybe nearer?
Yeah.
Yeah, nearer is what it says, that's the existing one.
I think it said a minute, they say nearer.
Yeah, it should say nearer. In any district, no detached garage or accessory building shall be placed nearer to a side or rear property line than 10 feet.
Yep.
That sounds about the...
Add E I to the nearer.
That's existing.
That's existing, so that's nearer.
I don't know why it originally said nearer, probably closer is a better word than nearer.
Yeah, closer would make more sense.
Closer, nearer is existing.
I agree.
All right. But it's been nearer for at least since 1987, so...
Yes.
Well...
Closer's good, okay.
In 2019, we could change it to nearer.
I'm looking, no, it already is nearer, you're not changing anything.
You're not.
It's noting near.
If that's typed wrong here, it's...
Yeah, it was simply, it was simply an error by my secretary, and then when you spell check, you know, near is a word, so it doesn't show it.
Yeah, it doesn't.
You call it, you're...
Near is a word.
That's the way it is.
That's what happened. Nobody's perfect.
Wow. I think your Christmas present just isn't going to be what it was now.
She never gives anything.
Cut the tape.
I've been there, too.
You're chasing yourself.
These aren't a point, oh, please, not far away.
Okay, are we making a motion here? What are you doing?
You can't. You can't.
No motion? Okay.
Well, typically, you never adapt anything the night of a bullet year.
Okay.
And in fact, you made that a policy.
We did.
Now, if you want to change that, I hope you can, but I didn't think you were going to adapt this tonight, because...
We haven't even closed the public portion of it.
Well, I know, but it sounded like, trust me, Lancy was about to make a motion.
Wow.
They're not calling me out, you were always looking, pointing at me, and I was getting nervous.
Is there anyone else that would like, anyone who would like to comment on this? Then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we will address this the next board meeting. Anybody have a comment?
No, they talked about it.
Okay, we have, next we have public hearing regarding local law number four, which amends section 156, 15P of the vehicle and traffic code. This has to do with parking in lots only controlled by the village. In the event of a violation in addition to any other prosecution or penalties, the village may have the vehicle removed or the pound of the cost of removal, storage charged against the owner thereof. Anybody like to comment on public law number four? And I will close the public comment portion of the hearing, and ask the board if they have any comment.
No, I think this was another one that we talked about and agreed upon.
We talked about it, yes.
No argument on this one.
We will vote on that if you feel... Move now to the attorney, and Don, do you have anything for this tonight? No, I do not. I do hope that your secretary issues you. I love it.
Yes, I have a few things, but I have coffee, so I'll talk fast. Cell tower, we're going back and forth with a company that's expressed interest in purchasing the cell tower leases, and invest for, I guess, some direction, I just need to ask for some direction from the board. I think I sent some emails, I got one response, but they have sent some examples of other leases, I think those are forwarded along as well, other leases that they did, but before we do a bunch of back and forth with them, I guess I don't know if there's any interest in pursuing it before, you know, my time and Don's time and their time is expended, or reviewing the leases and hammering out the finer points of any type of agreement. In a nutshell, they want to purchase, you know, we have three cell tower, or three, seven of their companies on the cell tower now, they want to purchase those, the leases, and there's different portions of one of them, one option is, you know, that they basically purchase the tower, maintain the tower as well, and in exchange, they give us, it's essentially, it works out to about 15 years of revenue upfront, but they can do it over a 15-year period, or they can do it all lump sum, there's a slight, you know, pretty significant difference, I guess, about 300 grand, whether it's over 15 years or whether it's all done lump sum, obviously, the 15 years is a little more generous than the lump sum payout that you get all upfront. I don't know, this company, how long they've been a business, I don't know if it was the correct...
15 years seems like the wrong thing.
Yeah, but they sent out the examples of the agreements, and it seems like they, basically, it's a 99-year lease, so we kind of get the first 15, if they get replacement, or additional tenants, excuse me, additional tenants on it, there's a revenue sharing for that, so if we have three cell tower companies on there now, and if they bring in a fourth, they would revenue share that, I think it's about 50/50 agreement, share for that. Or they do have some things in the other agreements that we looked at, where they would, you know, if they lose one of those cell tower companies, that's part of their sales pitch, I guess, is that they mitigate the risk, they're taking all the risk on, except for they mitigate it, and then kind of protect themselves, too, if there's three companies now, they lose one of the companies and get another one on, they don't owe the revenue share for anything except for what exceeds what they were expecting at the front side of it. So they do mitigate risk for themselves as well, pretty well, in that, in the way that agreement's formulated, I think. And it looks like they mitigate a lot of risk, was one agreement I looked at, they, I think the same day that they signed the agreement, they sold it to a different company. This is an acquisitions company, in their name, it's an acquisitions company, it seems like they buy it and then find a purchaser for it, and they have it all lined up, so, I mean, they, I saw one, I think it was in New Jersey or something, where they bought it, and that same day, had it trans sold to somebody else for pretty decent figures, so, but I don't know if there's interest in moving forward, if there is, we can keep trying to work out and hammer out details and get something that's something to consider, but there's a very diligent individual from this company that calls and writes and emails and usually on a weekly, if not a couple times a week basis, so we want to be able to give him some sort of direction, and either, you know, I don't know if there's interest from the board's standpoint in pursuing it, or if it's something that you, you wouldn't want to consider at all, or if you want to see the, kind of the final form before you consider it. But it's a lot of time, obviously, to work all that out before we invest that time, and if it's not, if it's something you don't want to look at at all.
Who says, I mean, we don't know any of our who says, it'll be a business five years from now, you know, or...
That's what, that's, I, if it was me and mine, I think I, even though it's a, it's a bit less, I think it's maybe about 18 to 20% less, you get it all upfront, I don't know what 18 to 20%, if you get that extra, if you headed, stowed away somewhere for the 15 years, where you make that 18% back, presumably, you get some of it back, if you were making interest on it, but I sure like that, you know, what did you say, third in the hands is better than two in the bunch, so, I kind of like that idea of having it upfront, if there was, even though it's less, but that's me. Well, then, you have the lease, you know, the existing leases go on longer than 15 years.
Yes.
So after, if, even if you did the payout, you know, the village gets nothing after 15 years, where if you just do nothing, as long as there's cell carriers, you're going to get that revenue from now until, unless they decide they no longer need it.
Yeah.
I don't know what the odds of that are, I...
Doesn't seem like a fad.
It doesn't seem like a fad, it seemed, it seemed like, even when we went through the small cell exercise, that they still need the big towers to make the little towers work.
Yep.
There's only, you know, Sprint and T-Mobile are combining, so what are the odds of you getting another carrier? Slim and none, there's not going to be a fourth carrier, there's, you know, right now there's four, but there's only going to be three, and you got all three on there now. So their enticement about, you get 50/50 if we get somebody else on the tower, yeah, that's nice, but it probably will never happen, you know, because is somebody going to start another national?
If anything, AT&amp;T's going to take over the whole thing. Because if they had their way, they would.
But that's what you got to decide, is it worth a million three upfront, I think that was the number, and just take the a million three and do whatever you want with it, but, and then just give up the rest of the revenue on the cell tower, from now till whenever.
99 years.
So that's, that's the basic decision you need to make. If you're willing to do that, then fine, Jake and I can work out the details with this company, but if you're not really interested in that in the first place, then Jake and I would rather, we'd rather spend our time doing other things, it's not like we don't have enough stuff to do as it is.
I think we should pursue it. See what the numbers shake out.
What's the revenue, what is our revenue per year, you know that now?
About 90 grand.
Yeah, about 90.
So, if you do the math, we're better off not doing it.
Well, it's 90,000, but it goes up 3% a year, there's escalators, and all of the leases.
I know.
Well, that's what it works out to be, the 1.6, approximately 1.6 million in 14 years, what it is right now, with the escalation of 3% per year, they did that now, so we were, we were gaining 1.6, we got 1.5 and change, so the 1.6 is what we were doing in 15 years anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
Jake, couldn't you say that you could negotiate that maybe a little more?
I think, but, you know, we're getting 1.6, we're getting 1.6 anyway in the first 15 years, but then we also have years 16 to 99, that we wouldn't get anything for.
Yep.
So that's, that's the big sales pitch, and I asked them quite point blank, I mean, listen, everybody's got to eat, and I get it, but if you're, you know, part of your sales pitch is the sky's falling out, these apartments are in combined, they're all going to go away, and then you're going to be left with no revenue, like, why would you want to buy it then?
There you go.
You know, but no, they diversify, and they have all these things, so they can absorb them, and they have all these holdings, and then, like I said, I looked up, I got on a, I think it was New York City, actually, not New Jersey, Nassau County Clerk's Office website, and found agreements, the one example that they gave us, one of them's signed, so I looked for other ones, and I found one that, like I said, that same day, where they took their acquisition property and that's, or company, and then sold it to a holding company, I don't know if it's a sister company, but it had a different name, so, and they sold it right that day, and I'm like, all right, well, that makes sense, you know, if they made 300 grand on the deal on the day, doesn't sound like a bad, bad business plan if you can do it, but, you know, and here, they do take the risk, but I don't know what risk there is, I can't, I, my kid is helping with my cell, so I certainly can't predict the future of what's going on.
But it is as Jake...
We don't know, we don't know.
It is as Jake says, it's years 16 to 99 that you're, you know, and you got to put yourself in a future board 16 years from now, and would they like, they have $100,000 of revenue, which you took upfront, you know...
Well, that 1.9, that would be a little more than $10,000.
Okay, well, whatever it is, I, you know, I'm not the math expert, I couldn't, I don't do that.
All right, so I think those two just needed general consensus, so waste their time right now. I'm saying no.
No, no.
No, they know the numbers, so. No.
Is it, no, after you hear that, I agree with you. You agree with who?
I don't say that. Now, maybe when you go and tell for his name, no, Connor, maybe he'll come back with, well, how about 3 million, you know, with a big, a lot bigger number, we'll see.
Oh, with that, I would...
At 3 million, you say yes?
At 1.6, I'd say no. You make that 15 years.
Get 3 million, Jake.
That'll walk.
Okay.
Come along with the three.
Done.
What else you got?
Um, I had questions, well, I know Lancy sent out an email last night, and I followed up with it, everybody, we have two employees, we'd like to have, they're just home for a month in between, you know, with college on their break, as you know, we've got one person that's out injured, not in work related, one person just had a baby, he's out, and we've got a whole bunch of leads that still pick up as soon as we get the opportunity, and snow and things like that, so, these kids are also interested in coming back next, next summer, they worked great this summer, and I think there's a lot certain, definitely a benefit to when you don't have to retrain somebody and, you know, get them back in there, and they start, start recon again, and we know their history, and know that they did work really well, so, if we could authorize to hire them for the, for this month that they're off, that would be especially helpful to kind of make up some of the gap that we're missing now, with some of the guys out, and the work that got consolidated in, I mean, I wish we could have had all the leads picked up, and we're not done doing them yet, it looks like we might have an opportunity, but then we might have some snow again, too, so, but we're going to keep at it, and, you know, this January, it's going to be January, when we're getting the leaders, but...
We weren't planning on two months of winter already.
No, no, and you know, it all averages out the same, so I figured if we have 12 inches or 16, or 11 or 12 inches more than we only get in December now, I believe we have 11 or 12 inches less some other time.
Well, it's only a month, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're here, I think it was till the January 17th or 19th.
That is, yeah.
That they would be here, and then, you know, we're off a few days in the middle of all that, so, with the holidays.
Were you looking at the same rate?
Yeah, it would be 12, I think actually it changes, it's 11.80 going at the end of this month anyway, isn't that what the minimum's going?
We had 12 weeks last week.
Yeah, so that'd be 12, yeah, I think that'd be...
So I'm sorry, was that two additional seasonal, so when we...
Yes, yep, yeah, just for short-term, like it's a...
So that, and we need it right now.
Yeah, because we don't know this seasonal that we got now is typically works at golf courses, I think he's a golf pro or something like that, so he's not going to be around in the summertime, obviously, the one that started today, so...
Yeah, you just got to drive it okay.
Did he? Maybe he'll let me go there and golf, but I don't think I do this because I've golfed in. Yeah, I'm just looking at the date real quick here, yes, it won 17, and that was, you know, Jack Willard and Mike Northrup, everyone's ever here, really good guys.
Anything else besides...
Well, that was my next little note here, is lead picked up.
Oh, do we have to?
We need to vote on that.
Yes, now they're asking all the same, we had a vote.
So we have a motion to hire two temporary employees through January 17th for, I believe, $12 an hour, to help the winter activities.
And leftover fall.
And leftover fall.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trusty Balkeen?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Abolito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Put the burlap up.
Yes.
Protect those small trees over there.
That's the first thing on their agenda.
Yeah, and the lead pickup, we're, yeah, we're not done with it, I know the town's hurtling as well, it's just, we get snow, and then we get a few days of warmth, and then cold again, and then the warmth that starts to melt, and then we get some more snow on top of it, so, we keep going back as soon as we get an opportunity, and it looks like we may Friday, maybe even Saturday, depending on that, it looks like Monday, Tuesday, we might get, might get more snow again, so, but we'll keep at it, and just know we have to, and leave when we can.
That's about it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I think we will have a motion to move into executive session, discuss the motion of termination of a particular employee. Can you entertain a motion to do that?
I'll make that.
I'll second. Trusty Abolito?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Balkeen?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Huh?
Can you come by in the morning?
No. Well, depends what time.
Motion, without an executive session?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
In favor? Any other business board would like to address?
Next meeting.
The next meeting.
See you next year.
So you're actually going to have a meeting on the 26th?
We are.
No, no.
Unless there is an issue that is necessary for the board to meet, we will not have a second meeting in December, if we moved it to... Uh, we moved it to the 24th, it would be a Tuesday, and that's the day before, the 26th is the day after Christmas, so we will not have a meeting.
So, the next meeting will be January 9th, sir?
Correct.
And that will be, I believe that will be in the morning or later.
Yes. Anything else? Nope. Motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in there?
Aye.
Aye. Carry on. Thank you.